We'll be moving on to the public hearing.
Wait, back to five?
Are we going back to five? Is that, you're pulling five, right?
Okay, so, um, I have a couple of questions, just going back, looking at my notes. Um, well, one of the first questions, and I know in the report, it doesn't go too much into detail, but I think it's important also because for, I guess, the public's peace of mind. Uh, one of the questions that I was asking is also asking one of the emails. Uh, let's see. Well, it's not public coming yet, right? Okay, so, one of the things that I noticed, and, um, and I believe it was not part of the first contract, was the 90-day termination notice. Is that correct? We didn't have one, we didn't have a X number of days termination notice required in the first contract, but we do here?
In the first contract, there was a 30-day
Thirty days.
Termination notice. Now, um, the updated contract or the updated, um, document, it calls for a 90-day termination notice.
Okay. Um, well, I would like to see the same number, 30 days. I mean, I, either way, I, you know, but, but I think it's just from, for, from my perspective, from my point of view, I think I would feel more comfortable with the 30 days instead of the 90. Um, and let me just double check real quick. And then, just to clarify, this contract, the first contract expires May, is it May or June?
May 21st.
May 21st?
Yes.
And at the moment, I would like to have, uh, to move, uh, those are all my questions for, at the moment, then that way I can allow others to ask any other questions they might have.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have.
Go ahead.
Right here says the city had paid the chief $70,000 within the last six months. How many hours does that equal per week? How many hours was the chief working?
That is an average of 112 weeks per invoice period, so that is roughly, um, 32, 33 hours a week.
Any other questions?
Can we hear a little bit about the recruitment efforts?
Sure, so, um, we hire CPS HR as the executive recruitment company to do this, um, chief of police recruitment. Um, this was an item that was approved by the council back in December 2021. The recruitment company went out and conducted an aggressive recruitment, what they call, which is targeting over, um, all of the platforms that are normally, um, law enforcement oriented. Um, some of those platforms are the Police Chief Magazine, the California Police Chiefs Association, Western City Magazine, just a very, a, a, a various number of, of just government jobs and executive recruitment jobs as, um, as well. So, uh, from that recruitment effort, um, they reported back that they approximately contacted or approached from that aggressive, um, uh, recruitment about 1,900 professionals. Um, that includes also referrals that come about through their, uh, platform and, um, just potential candidates via email or by the mail. Um, out of that, the, um, the recruitment closed in Sept-, in February, February 21st, 2022, and out of that, they evaluated the, the, the number of candidates that they, or the responses that they received. Out of conducting that aggressive recruitment, the company received only, um, 10 resumes that were, uh, potential candidates to apply. Out of those 10 resumes, the company just, um, went on for further screening and determined that four of those resumes were somewhat viable candidates that could move forward. What they did is provide us with, uh, two groups. They, they grouped this four candidates into two, um, into two groups. Group A, which they deemed that they were mostly, um, they were mostly qualified or most closely qualified or matched for the recruitment. Um, and then Group B, which were, uh, what they call something thinking outside of the box, that, um, they were, they probably didn't, didn't have the experience or the revel- relevant, um, education, but it's something stood out out of those candidates that were just, um, that made it to that group. So, we had four, um, four candidates that the company determined that were closely matched. Um, this is, um, looking at an education and, and experience of having a bachelor's degree and, um, and, and about three years of experience in the rank of a lieutenant or above, and having post certifications. So, um, from those, that recruitment, it was, it was deemed that, um, the, the two that mostly match or closely match those requirements were not a viable, were not viable candidates for this, for the city to bring forward, either for a community panel or for a, um, professional panel at the moment. So, I, I, I am continue, I, I, I continue to, um, to do this recruitment efforts. We are, um, we are competing in a very difficult labor market. We are competing with, um, other cities that are also experiencing, um, vacancies and, um, and there, there may be most appealing to the, um, matched candidates or the candidates that possess the, the experience that, that, or, or the education or the background that we are, that, that we require from our job description. And, um, so, from that point, we will continue, we're, we're asking or we're saying we will continue to conduct recruitment efforts. But we need to, we need to, um, request an extension on this contract in order for us to be able to bring a candidate that it's, it's, um, it's a quality candidate for our community.
Thank you, I, I appreciate the rundown. With all that, were those required or desired?
Those are requirements.
Of our previous chiefs, who, who met those requirements? Whether interim or chiefs that we've had in the past?
I, um, I was not involved in the hiring of previous, um, candidates. Um, I know that if the interim, um, the interim candidate that is serving currently is, um, possesses those, uh, requirements. That's, I can share with you in those terms.
Right here, I'm looking at where it says that.
Hold up, hold on, just, are you?
Are you done? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Are you, are you, there. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Yeah, it says we're paying $146.33. Vanessa, you just told us right now, our chief is working 32 hours per week. That's $4,672. Times that by 52 weeks, it'll be 4,000, um, 2,000, um, 242,944 dollars for a part-time chief. If we were to extend it to a 40-hour week, we'll have over $300,000. That's overtime, that's no holidays, no special events, that's Monday to Friday. That's not including miles, what is it? Dollar something, I didn't see that right here. Dollar 20 a mile, right? Right here, it says we will not exceed more than $275,000. Well, we're not gonna even get a 40-hours work week out of it.
Well, the amount that we have paid so far, it includes everything. It includes
For three months, 70,000?
Over time, it includes the, um, mileage
I'm just doing simple math, not overtime. So, that means the number 32 hours was wrong then.
Oh, this is, this is included and
In 32 hours, that's what the, we're getting right now per week? And the numbers don't match?
Regular hours, there's also, uh, overtime hours that are
Even with the regular hours, the numbers don't match. With overtime, the number should be higher. Do the math, get your calculator out. $146 dollars an hour times 32. Equals $4,672. Times that by 52 weeks. So, if you're saying that's with overtime, if to get this number, that means the hours were 20 less.
I have to, I, I
Yeah, do the math.
A weighted average, but I have that information.
Yeah, can you please send that to me? Because either I'm not good at math or the numbers are wrong. Okay, it doesn't add up.
Any other questions? For myself, um, I see that, uh, Councilmember Moran also stated about the, um, Councilmember Ken, you can get with Vanessa after. Thank you. So, for me, myself, on this, uh, item, that Councilmember Moran stated, um, he wants a 30-day. I know there's probably something behind the 90-day because it's a, a year contract. Something took place today, today at our department, which was not, um, planned or anything, however, that I, I believe there's two members of the administration that were gonna, um, go more into detail on why and, um, if we had any further questions, uh, they're the expertise in this area, uh, they were unable to make, and that's why I was trying to pull this item for a special meeting. Or when's the, um, the mayor going to Washington or?
So, One Voice Tripit
Yes.
Takes place May 3rd through May 6th.
Okay, so maybe, um, I would have to get with him or, um, Monica for the, uh, following week to have a special meeting on, maybe they can, um, come out that day and then further explain this contract and why there's need to be a 90-day and not the 30-day, um, issue or whatever comes up. And like I said, the mayor should be involved in this, um, item also. It's, like I said, it's very important to the city of Livingston, um, for this contract. So, that's why, um, me and myself would like to remove the item for a further roundtable discussion. For a future, either a special, uh, meeting next week or the May 17th, um, council meeting. Says we'll have a few days before that, right? It expires May 22nd, I think? 20th?
The 20th.
20th, okay.
The 22nd.
So, I think we'd be fine if we came back on the 17th also, but the sooner the better. So, me and myself, I'd like to, um, remove this item for a future, for a future agenda item.
What happens if one of us can't make it to a meeting?
Well, you can call, right? If you don't. That's why we're doing it for, okay.
We have a form.
For the May 17th. While there's two, like I said, admini- administration that was gonna be here, however, something took place today, that works, can explain more on this, um, contract. Either for us and the public. So, that's just me, so.
The contracts, I mean, the staff report was written by Vanessa, so Vanessa, can you please explain?
You know, in simple terms, I was gonna say Mayor Protem, if I may. Um, the, the county has standard language and templates for all of these, uh, contracts that go through their office. When we requested interim services, it was a short-term contract, so they, uh, the, the language or the template that, that they use, it's, it's a normal 30 days. Um, the amendment to that contract, it's taking us, and that's the recommendation of, of the city, to do an amendment to that first contract for, um, the one that we enter into in November and, uh, take it through Ju-, through June 30, 2022, so till the, the end of the fiscal year. Um, and then we're also requesting, so then we can have some time in order to continue to recruit, to continue to conduct the recruitment efforts, to extend this contract through the, to, through the following fiscal year. And, and really, I mean, like, recruitments happened, they don't take a month. We normally have to open the position for a whole month to provide, um, time for candidates to submit their application, but we are also going to, um, we're continuing to do, we're continuing to leave the position open until filled, so we can continue to receive applications as they come in. But really, um, we're also looking at implementing other, um, thinking outside of the box, implementing other ideas that will come to the council at the time when we bring the budget, which is gonna be in, um, in, uh, early June. And, um, and, and we can provide some, some other ideas for succession planning, to provide some training opportunities for the, for, for, for the, the workforce that we have on hand today and, um, and, and potentially to help us with this, um, this, this, uh, what we have going on, where, where we are in, 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 in need of interim chief services, but we don't have any kind of in-between that could provide, could provide those, um, those services within the city. So, we're, we're, we're working on different angles at this, um, at this, in this, um, in, in, in this matter. We're asking, and the second, um, the second contract, which is going to be the contract for fiscal year 2223, is, it, it's a contract, the county has regular standard language in their contract. If it's longer term, the normal language is for a 90-day, um, request for termination notice.
So, I heard you say, "City recommends." When you say "city recommends," on whose behalf are you speaking?
On behalf of the staff. Staff recommends that we, we're making a recommendation to the council that we, um, first recommendation, it's to amend the, um, the, the contract till June 30, 2022, and the second recommendation is to extend that contract through the second, um, through June 30, 2023. So, it can give us ample time to conduct our recruitment and bring quality candidate to the community.
I just wanna, in regards to the consultants that were, were hired, I'm looking at that from hearing past, uh, residents come forward and speak on behalf of their own city and, and their public safety. Our consultants are looking at candidates on, on paper, whereas our residents know the police staffing that we already have. And many of them came forward with some other recommendations, um, that they presented at, at council meetings. And I'm just trying to, to look at that in the best interest of city when you're talking, you know, that you've, you know, we're looking at a template created by the county and how things should be ran according to the templates that county has spelled out for the city of Livingston. We are the city of Livingston, and I do want to be able to have more of a say in this type of a, a contract that's being put out here this evening. There should have been more discussion with our, our council, made, made aware of this, and the fact that it was put on consent is, is bothersome because there are questions here, concerns here, that we're not operating as our own jurisdiction, city of Livingston, Livingston PD. So, I do, if there's more discussion to be said, I mean, I'm comfortable with just being able to look at this and maybe even put it to a vote. I mean, I know that you and the mayor should be able to sit down and, and look at these things together, and, and it's, it's unfortunate that Mayor Aguilar is not here this evening so that he could speak on this item. But again, I, I do believe that, uh, before presenting this on, on consent and knowing that he was going out of town, it was, uh, for lack of words, I, I, I'm not comfortable with this being on the consent agenda. Not comfortable with, uh, with this item being before us with, uh, Mayor Protem. I'm not, no offense, but again, with the recommendation from our legal side saying that it was a conflict. So, again, it's been explained by Mayor Protem, where he is and, and how he feels on it. But I, I'm not quite certain I, I feel as comfortable.
So, we owe, we do owe the city of Livingston a, a chief. However, the city of Livingston does not, should not be appointed a chief that the city manager or the current interim chief decided and on the recommendations. We do not know what's behind those recommendations, we don't know the research, or if they could talk about it. I doubt they could talk about it because it goes into personnel matters on the background on these candidates that they did their research on, on these, uh, candidates that were recommended to them. You know, so, so like I said, I, we don't know the, the history on that part. So, I mean, it's why we, we, uh, put them in their positions so they can ma- make the best, uh, decision for the city of Livingston. So, I know Vanessa said there's two, it's two contracts here, correct?
I got a, a quick question. Are you done?
Uh, hold, hold, let me finish. Vanessa, there's two contracts, right? In, in this proposal here?
The, yes, there's one amendment and there is a contract extension. So, the amendment will take the con- the current contract that expires May 2022 through June 30, 2022. And the other, and the second extension, it's an extension through June 2023.
Okay, so, can we split the two items here today to get voted on, or to vote, and then the other item, the extension for the year extension? Um, we can bring that up back in the May 17th or, um, before the 30th of June again? Is that, is that possible?
You can do that.
Or, or would you be fine with that? To extend the current one to June 30th of '22? Like, um, and then put the other year back on the, on, um, public hearing? Or, I mean, can, either, um, discussion or public hearing or the consent agenda on May 17th or, uh, the day bef-, or the day before the, uh, the expiration date of June 30th?
You finished?
Go, go ahead.
Yeah, I do agree with you on that part, we do owe Livingston a police chief. This is a city, we owe them a city police chief, not a county, so I have to disagree with you on that part. And the second thing with Vanessa, I have a question, is you said you couldn't find nobody yet. Is the recruitment still open or you closed it?
The recruitment is still open.
So, maybe we need to change the qualifications, you're gonna bring that to us? Because this is a small town, Livingston. I don't think, you're never gonna find a lieutenant that's gonna get a, uh, pay cut from a bigger city to come and work for Livingston. That's never gonna happen. Either you're gonna have to raise the price, pay what you're making, or otherwise you're gonna have a hard time finding a police chief. I mean, if the qualifications are harder, our last three chiefs, only, there were, Chief Eldridge was a sergeant, Chief Marco was a sergeant, and Chief Soria was a sergeant and became a lieutenant and a chief. So, the, the qualifications that you have right now are for bigger cities, not for a small-sized city like Livingston. We have to relook at that. Otherwise, we'll pay this contract over $300,000, and we'll be here next year again and you still won't find nobody. Because with that firm, we, we're looking at three positions or four positions, and we haven't found for anything. No service director, no wastewater manager, no police chief, because our qualification is too high.
And the firm is not doing the recruitment for wastewater manager?
Find the other, other two or three for the finance director, whatever they are.
And we're moving forward with a finance director.
Okay.
That's, that's
Yeah, so, for the other two positions, I mean, we need a time limit. When do you think you could find somebody? Because signing a one-year contract with a 90-day notice, we could be here for another year.
Yes, Councilmember Ken, like I said, there is, um, there, there is a shortage, and we are not the only city experiencing, uh, vacancies and hard-to-fill vacancies, especially in this high-level positions, the department head side. It is, we're not the only city going through that. It's, we survey cities around the county or neighbor counties, and we are, we're all going through the same, competing for the same talent in some, in, in, in some, um, with some, um, positions.
Go ahead, sir, or Mr. Moran.
I think I know the answer to this question, but I just want clarification. Are current staff members from Pete Livingston PD, are they allowed to apply for this position?
It's an open recruitment, Councilmember Moran, so
So, that is yes. If, if, if they wish to participate, they're able to, right?
It, this is conducted as an open recruitment.
Okay.
Yes, that's if they meet the requirement. So, if the requirements are set too high, then no, the question is, nobody from Livingston could apply, because they don't meet the requirement.
Did we get any applicants from our Livingston? Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
I, I don't have that information. I have information on the, on the candidates that, that mostly matched and, um,
Were, were you done, Councilmember? So, I think it's, I think every, I think it's very important, and I, and I think up to a certain point, we're on the same page that Livingston deserves the best. At least, that's what I think, you know? I'm, I'm here to represent the, all of the residents of Livingston and, well, let me just speak for myself. For any position, whether it's chief of police, some kind of director, custodian, public works, whatever it is, I think that I wanna go and, 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 and I wanna make sure that I have the best candidate out there. Regardless of how big our city is, you know, whether we're 20,000 or, you know, if, if, I think Livingston has to offer, it's a great community, it's small enough to, or still a small community. I think the events that we've been having lately that has shown, you know, uh, how great of a community we, you know, we could be, you know, and we are. Uh, looking at the different, uh, you know, recreation department, the parks that we have. Uh, actually, just a few days ago, I was talking to someone, and actually, two days the, the parks that we have, uh, actually, just a few days ago, I was talking to someone, and actually, two days ago, yesterday, I was talking to someone, and they were complimenting the city of Livingston, you know, how well our parks look compared to other cities, and, you know, I'm like, well, thank you, you know? And they were mentioning names, and, you know, I'm like, yeah, my, you know, I seen them, I've been there, you know? Uh, so, as much as, you know, I think that as much as we wanna hurry up and have everything in place, uh, we'd be working too hard to be able to have, to make sure that we have something that is, is gonna work for us and not just hire anyone because we wanna have our chief, quote-unquote, you know? Um, and, and I think that goes with any other industry, you know? I can probably, probably relate to education. You know, we wanna make sure that we have the best candidates available, um, you know, whether it's an engineer, whether it's anything. So if I, if I have to wait a few more months to make sure that, you know, I, I don't wanna have, no offense to anyone, I mean, I don't know, you know, if they don't meet the qualifications, then, then those qualifications are there for a reason. Because I wanna make sure that we have the best and not having to deal with, you know, go, having to go through this process again in X amount of time, you know? Whoever comes, wanna make sure that it's gonna be someone that's gonna be here for a long time, that is gonna, you know, uh, grow into this community and is gonna be part of this community. I don't wanna ask all of the details of why or why not, but at the same time, just like you guys said, and we said here before, I mean, up to a certain point, we have people in place to do the work for us. You know? Then again, it's up to us to figure out, okay, do I, and it's not like every time we agreed, but we have to agree to disagree sometimes too. And, you know, if, and even if if we have candidates and up to a certain point, this, this council voted to have certain people in places to be able to do the legwork for us, and if they come back to us and say, well, I think we should continue and look for, have an opportunity to see if somebody else can come along and, and, you know, uh, really fit the shoes that we wanna have for them, I'm okay with that. You know, unless something changes, unless, uh, but with the information that I have and, and thinking about how important those positions are, I wanna make sure that I have the best candidate. But if we don't, if I, if I, if I hear that, I don't feel confident, too sure about our current candidates, you know? Uh, I will not be doing my best to serve those who elected me, but that is my point of view. Thanks.
And, um, I mean, I could just, I agree with, uh, Mr. Moran on the, the issue, on just not to put somebody in there just cause we need somebody. Yeah, we've hired our standards, I mean, we should, uh, Livingston deserves the best. And, uh, just a reminder, I mean, I'm pretty sure Vanessa went out and tried to get what's, get somebody to come in to the city of Livingston, however, the sheriff's department stepped up and they said, hey, we care, that's why they put, um, a certain individual here, the interim chief, because if not, who would we have in place right now? We don't know. Somebody that we would have to hire just because we need a body in that position. And who cares about their qualifications or their background, but we need somebody. No, Livingston doesn't deserve that, they deserve the best. So that's it on me, but to move on on this item, I would just like to extend the contract um, to, on two separate, um, motions if we could. For one, for the, um, their item, separate them, for, extend the contract to June thirtieth of twenty-two, and then come back in, before that date to, um, here, and we get a better understanding, do more research on our part for the other part of the year extension. So, can I make the motion on that? So I'd like to make the motion on to extend it to June-
Any public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, is there any public comment?
I did receive an email from Catherine Shield that I provided to the council as, um, as well as the person that to, uh, the city manager. So, do you guys want me to read it, or?
If you would, Monica, please.
Okay. So it states, according to the staff report, the chief of police recruitment closed in February twenty-twenty-two. Unfortunately, the recruitment did not generate the response and/or results desired. Could you be a little more specific as in numbers and qualifications of applicants about just what did not generate the response and/or results desired actually means?
I think we answered most of that, correct?
Well, Catherine's saying they closed in February, but Vanessa, you're saying it's still open, that you're still recruiting.
It has to be after. CPS HR, when they gather the information for these candidates, they, they closed it in February. They, they opened it from January through February, and this is the report that I have. I, on the other hand, we still have the position open on our website, and we're still taking applications. They're not, they're-
They're coming directly to you now.
They're con- they're coming, they're not coming directly to me, they're coming and they're, they're providing them to, um, they're sending them over to HR, but we don't have, we haven't received any other applications at the moment. I'm providing you with the report that the recruitment agency generated.
So, we are done with the, the agency right now?
The agency has done, has done their recruitment, they have done their, their efforts to provide outreach, do referrals, bring candidates, and it's, it's up to the city to, to, to go through that. Unfortunately, they, um, they did provide that, the information that there is a really competitive market out there, and, um, and, and, and this is, this is happening more often than not to have, um, candidates that, that, um, closely match, but, um, but may not be, may not be fully up to the, um, the standards or the required qualifications of a city.
Yeah, and in the prior, we had a citizens panel, professional panel, are you still considering that? To maybe we could, we could bring these-
When I have a-
applicants in and see if the residents have a different opinion on their opinion? Cause my only worry I have is that we could be going in circles. It's already been six months, we've been looking for a new police chief, is, and still have nothing, and you have zero applicants, this could go on for a year.
Yeah, and at this, at this moment, council, I do not feel that the candidates that are proposed are quality candidates that will be, um, that will be a, a match and a good fit for our community.
Thank you, Vanessa. Anything else, Monica?
No, that's it for emails.
Anybody on the phone? No, so a closed public comment now. So I bring it back to council, uh, like I said, I would, me and myself would like to make a motion to extend the current contract to June thirtieth, since we don't have no one in place as, as of today, um, to take the position over June thirtieth, twenty-two, and then come back, I mean, possibly May seventeenth of twenty-two on that council for the other half of the, uh, contract extension. I'd like to make the motion on that one.
Oh, second. Councilmember, only to extend with the first part of it.
And get clarification later for this, uh, for the next year. So, second by Councilmember Moran. Monica, can we get roll call, please?
Roll call, Councilmember Soto?
No.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
No.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Motion filled by a vote of two, two.
Okay, so we'll be moving on to-